Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Yountville Town Council meeting for Tuesday, April 16th, 2019. Go ahead and call this meeting to order and ask for a roll call, please.
Councilmember Durham.
Here.
Councilmember Mohler.
Here.
Vice Mayor Dorman.
Here.
Mayor Dunbar.
Here.
Please let the record reflect that Councilmember Doran Becker is excused.
And we hope that she is getting over the illness that has been causing her issues for some time now, so we look forward to having her back and healthy. I do want to, before we go on to our Pledge of Allegiance, I want to recognize that we did lose a very longtime friend and community leader, Barbara Delinsky, who passed away earlier this week. And we would be here all night to list the things that Barbara was involved in and did to help make Yountville what we are today. But what I would like all of us to do is have a moment of silence in her honor and her memory, so please join us. Thank you very much. Also, we will be adjourning the meeting in Barbara's memory when we get to the end of the meeting. So with that, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Pleading) The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia stands: One Nation, Under God, Indivisible, with Liberty and Justice.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
I make a motion, we adopt tonight's agenda?
You...
Sorry?
Hit the button.
I'm about to.
Thank you. And a second?
Did you hit your button?
I did.
No button. Well, I'll try it. I'll second it by hitting the motion button.
There we go. All in favor?
Aye.
We're not going to bog down here on the agenda. We do have a proclamation, and normally I go to the podium, but I'm going to stay here because this is recognizing our town clerk and all of her colleagues, and so Michelle is continuing to help run the meeting, so I'll stay here, but recognize Michelle and the fact that this week is Municipal Clerks Week. Whereas the office of the municipal clerk, a time honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world. Whereas the office of the municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels. Whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service with a high level of integrity to all. Whereas municipal clerks stay abreast of the affairs of the office through participation in educational programs such as new law workshops and City Clerks Association annual meetings of their state, county, and international professional organizations. Whereas municipal clerks strive constantly to improve the administration of the affairs of the office consistent with applicable laws and through sound management practices to fulfill responsibilities to the community and others. Whereas the municipal clerk for the town of Yountville, Michelle, serves as the town's election official, Political Reform Act filing officer, oversees the town's records management program, distributes town council agendas in accordance with the Brown Act, maintains the legislative record of council proceedings, oversees board and commission appointments, provides support to the town council and town manager, and acts as the custodian of the town seal. Whereas Michelle Dame has served as the town council, the town of Yountville Town Clerk since July of 2006 and has worked in municipal government since 1997. Michelle is also a member of the International Institute of Municipal Clerks, the City Clerks Association of California, and the Municipal Management Association of Northern California. Now therefore be it resolved that I, John F. Dunbar, Mayor of the town of Yountville, do recognize the week of May 5 through 11, 2019, as Municipal Clerks Week and extend appreciation to all municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the community they represent. So thank you very much, Michelle.[321.13][321.13](Applause). As I do everyone, I invite you to share any thoughts you might like to share with the audience. I know you don't like to do that, but I'm putting you on the spot.
Thank you for that acknowledgement. I appreciate it. I enjoy what I do and been doing it, as you heard, for quite some time. Also, I would like to let everyone know that ZDRB, Yountville Arts Commission, and the Yountville Community Foundation will be having some, a notice of vacancy posted at the end of the week, so if people are interested in serving, you can apply online, so thank you.
Now you're just showing off.[362.41][362.41](Laughter).
Just doing a plug.
Well, thank you, Michelle, from all of us, and we appreciate all the long hours that you put in also, because you're here with all of us to the very end. Thank you. Next up is public comment. Would anyone like to address the council on something that's not on tonight's agenda? Okay. You're here for a reason. Next up, our consent calendar, items 7A through D. Are there any for discussion, or is there an action on the consent calendar?
Make a motion. My button's not working, but I make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, and we have no votes. Please vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So that passes unanimously.
We won't use that tonight, since you guys aren't being able to log in.
Okay. There you go, making an executive decision right on the spot. All right, we're going to move ahead to our first presentation, item 8A, a presentation by the Yountville Chamber of Commerce on the State of Tasting Rooms in Yountville. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you so much for having us tonight. I will be joined for this presentation by Ryan Hill, proprietor of Hill Family Estates, and Tracy McCardle, general manager for the Good Life Wine Collective, that also includes Jessup Cellars and handwritten wines. So I'm going to kick things off, and then we're going to switch off on a couple of slides that you're going to see tonight. And this is an informative presentation on the State of Tasting Rooms in Yountville. We're going to go over a couple different things tonight, and we're here to answer any questions that you have once our presentation is finished. So, presentation overview. What we're going to talk about tonight is historical perspective on the industry and Yountville tasting rooms specifically, today's perspective, where the industry is today and where Yountville tasting rooms are today, the competitive marketplace, what's our competition up to, not just here in Napa Valley but beyond, our requests for you this evening, an edit to the municipal code, and what those edits could be in terms of impacts. We'll look at that quickly, and then feedback from our residents. So, a disclaimer and thank you. Rob McMillan with the Wine Division at Silicon Valley Bank. We are referencing a number of his resource, research, and reports throughout this presentation. So I have the hyperlink up there, and of course, if you'd like further information on this, please just feel free to email me, but much of this statistics came from the 2019 State of the Wine Industry Report, which Rob and his team have done for many years now. A few of the council members heard him speak actually a couple weeks ago at our Wine Hospitality Partnership Meeting here at Jessup Cellars, so we're incorporating some of the things that he talked about at that meeting. Okay, so I'd like to go ahead and turn it over to Ryan Hill to talk about the historical perspective, and then Tracy will come up, and then I'll come back up as well.
Thank you. Howdy, everyone. I'm Ryan Hill with Hill Family. I get to talk about the history. As some of you might know, I was born in this town, goes back to 1981. In Hill Family Estate, we opened our doors September of 2006. I believe we were the second tasting room behind Jessup, and we've always believed in this town as a great spot. We've always wanted to celebrate our roots, and it gives me great pleasure to operate a family-owned business in town. And Whitney, thank you so much. She's been amazing. She put all this together, and because I've been here as long as I have, I get to talk about some of these slides. So the first one, the historical perspective. You know, if we go back to when the first tasting room was established in 2003, we were three years after them, town was very different then. I think I heard a statistic the other day that the average guest day is about two and a half days in town, and when it was just us and Jessup, and then of course Hope and Grace opened their doors in the early days, there was a pretty good chance that we were going to see some of the guests that were inhabiting the hotels in town. And so we just noticed that traffic was a lot higher, and it was really easy to recommend another tasting room right down the street. We had a number of different referral bases that don't exist quite the same way that they do today. For example, there was a lot more support from shuttles, from concierge, and from chauffeur drivers that would bring their guests into town. We found that we were really busy usually in the evenings when people would go out and taste, and then they would come back, and they would get to the hotel, they would walk the beautiful streets. And we also found that around lunchtime, if the driver was early to getting their clients to a restaurant, or if they were backed up, they would bring us by, and at the time, we could offer them a full tasting when they were only going to be there 10, 15 minutes. What we could do is just offer them a tasting. So it was a little bit different. And when the tasting rooms were established in Yountville, it was all based around wine education. And I think something that's interesting there is that our teams at tasting rooms in Yountville have to work pretty hard. And the reason we have to work pretty hard is because we have a lot of first-time guests that come to this valley, and in their minds, they want to see a vineyard, they want to see a winery. And I think that a lot of the tasting rooms open their doors here because the hotels and the restaurant vet guests that are going to walk the streets, and we have a lot of support from locals that like to come see us on a regular basis. But I got to tell you, it's for the sales associates, they work very hard painting a picture of what Napa Valley is all about, because most of us are storefront operations, and so we're bringing Napa to them through more of a mainstream experience, if you will. When we first opened our doors, we had two bars, and people would belly up to the bar. They paid a nominal fee to taste wine. To fit in with the non-wine, local-serving diversity plan, we had antiques, and we've slowly transitioned into home decor. And so that's been our natural transition within town. Let's see, the last slide here is concern from residents that tasting rooms in Yountville would morph into wine bars, and limitations were put in place through the municipal code. I would, if there's residents here that want to talk about that further, I'd be happy to hear their concerns. I don't see that being an issue. I didn't see it in the early days back in '06, and I certainly don't see that now. And we've gone through a lot of change, being that we've had our doors open since '06 and Wait, did you hit this one?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, so go forward and back like that.
Yeah?
Okay, there you go.
Okay. So this is a slide about winery and tasting room openings. There's a dark blue and a light blue. The light blue represents wineries, and the dark blue represents tasting rooms. You can see in the highlighted area, this was found on Wine Business Monthly that talks about how much tasting room growth that we have had. So back when we opened our doors, it was interesting, there were more wineries opening than tasting rooms, and the tide has definitely shifted since then. And you can see from 2013 to 2017, the amount of tasting rooms that have opened compared to wineries. This is a historical perspective, so you can see the established date. Now Whitney, correct me if I'm wrong, but these are all tasting rooms that have O2 permits, correct?
Correct.
So there are other facilities that do offer tastings and sell wine, but they don't obtain an O2 permit. So this is the list, and you can see that this mirrors the last slide that I showed you, the majority of tasting rooms that have opened have been relatively recently compared to the first ones prior to 2010, 2009. Okay, what the customer experience used to be. This is a good one. I went into a little bit of detail about that. It used to be that folks, you know, and I can speak on behalf of Hill Family, but being that I like to frequent other tasting rooms within town, from '06 to about 2012, it used to be that people would show up, they walk up to a bar, there's usually one to two sales associates that are manning that bar, and they pour wine, and then there's a long line of guests that they're trying to service all at the same time. So the ability to share the brand philosophy and to share the brand story and go into a lot of detail behind the wines that they were tasting was oftentimes limited throughout the day, because the majority of us are open to the public, as opposed to booking by appointment only. And so sometimes it's difficult to staff when you have a lot of people that are coming in at one time and getting behind the bars. And so, you know, we would kindly ask people to come back at a later time, but that has transitioned a little bit more into people wanting to have a more isolated experience away from a bar, where they can hear about the vineyards, they can hear about the wines, and it's more of an intimate experience. That's how I've seen the transition morph since we opened our doors in the beginning. Let's see, it looks like we have another slide. Guests standing at the tasting bar, I mean, that's a pretty good image and a depiction of when we first started back in '06. You know, Whitney, remember this, I remember it like it was yesterday. There was probably one to two people trying to service all of those people, more of a communal format. It was fun for some people, you know, like being next to somebody on an airplane or a train, you get to know your neighbor. But others, you know, they would interrupt conversations, they would interrupt the sales associate. Sometimes it was hard to get the full brand message from the people participating. The private, the semi-private experiences were very rare, and it was a quick experience. You know, I think it's interesting in speaking with some of my friends that are in the driving business, you know, back in the day when they started their driving businesses, when we started our tasting room, they were taking the guests to maybe four to six wineries. And their goal is to keep their guests in the vehicle, because they're paid by the hour, and now the visits are maybe two to three per day. So guests want to visit half the amount of wineries that they used to, and they want to spend a little bit longer time really soaking in the culture of each spot that they visit. Let's see, the four-year trend, again, this is from Wine Business Monthly. If you just scan over to 2018, the reserve tasting is illustrated in orange, a standard tasting is in blue, and you can look at the Yountville average reserve versus the standard. I mean, these are high prices, folks. You know, we have gone way up. I think that the amount of money that guests are spending at hotels has continued to increase. Growing up in Yountville, I used to work at Bouchon. I can tell you right now that the menu prices have gone up. Everything is starting to increase, right? And so this just shows, if you compare this to other areas, we are a very prestigious town, and there's a lot of people that come here that are willing to spend a lot to have a wonderful experience at our establishments. This is a four-year trend of average retail bottle price. Look at Napa. It's a little tough, the color coding is difficult to see from here. $95 a bottle is the average price last year for a bottle of wine. And that's just, that's mind-boggling to me. If you go to some of these other regions, it's amazing, like the Sierra foothills, Livermore, Lodi, they're at $26 and $29 respectively. So Napa has this cachet that we have continued to uphold, and with the price of land nearly doubling every decade, with labor going up, the price of a ton of Cabernet Sauvignon, that is reflected in these prices that are illustrated here. Okay, today's perspective. Whitney, is this still me? Okay. Thought that might be the case. Thank you, council. I'd like to introduce Tracy.
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you. My name's Tracy McCardle. I'm the general manager for the Good Life Wine Collective, which does include handwritten wines and Jessup Cellars. Thank you, Ryan, and thank you, Whitney, as well. It is an honor to be here this evening, and thank you, Mayor and council, for hearing this presentation this evening. So I'm going to speak to you a little bit about today's perspective, and I want to start, I'm going to highlight three things, really talk about the evolution and the customer experience and how it stands today. Then I'm going to actually provide an example of how not having by the bottle and by the glass and how it's created a negative impact on our experience. And then I'm going to finish with a couple trends that we've seen in terms of both visitation and also with demographics. The customer experience. So it's definitely changed over the years, as Ryan referred to earlier, from more communal or kind of belly up to the bar atmosphere to definitely a more personalized, private experience. For the Good Life Wine Collective in particular, our main objective is to deliver an amazing experience that allows us to really connect with each and every guest. We believe the long-term success of our business depends on our ability to develop and sustain customer relationships. In order to do this effectively, we really need a tasting environment that is innovative and flexible, and we want to deliver the highest level of hospitality possible, which involves never saying no and really going above and beyond for our customers. So a case study for us, so we've had an ability to grow a rather robust membership, which is really critical to the overall success of the tasting room environment. Our tasting, our membership actually, 25% lives locally to the Bay Area, and oftentimes they want to come and pick up their wines from our tasting rooms. So oftentimes, in fact, in 2018, we hosted over 8,000 of our club members, and we've noticed that, and we've received a lot of requests from our club members, that when they come into town, they don't necessarily want to actually do the full tasting experience. They've requested if they can come to town, pick up their wines, go have lunch somewhere in Yountville, or have dinner somewhere in Yountville, and really just have a glass of wine with us. And of course, we want to exist in this sort of never say no, really nice culture environment where we can deliver a high level of hospitality. And so having to say no to our customers and our members is a difficult thing to do, and also, our club members have this expectation that they would be able to come and buy by the glass or by the bottle, and this is primarily due to the fact that there are members of clubs all over in different wine country areas within the Northern California, and a lot of the other areas do allow wine to be sold by the glass and by the bottle. So it's, we find ourselves in a situation where we are creating disappointment, not only in the level of the customers, but also on our employees as well, because they don't want to have to say no to our club members. I love this next slide. This is a great representation of what's happening in terms of visitation in the Napa Valley. So while we're seeing that visitation throughout the Napa Valley is up, visitation to our individual tasting rooms are down. And this is primarily due, and actually Ryan talked about this a little earlier, this is primarily due to the fact that a lot of wineries are focusing on the customer experience. So they're spending more time with the customers, the tastings are actually lasting a little bit longer. And because of that, like Ryan alluded to earlier, sometimes you'd have customers or members doing, you know, four or five tastings in a day. Now we're really seeing more of an environment where they're doing two or three tastings in a day. So we're seeing, you know, less, the opportunity to see less customers in a given day. All right, so this slide, we're really going to talk more about demographics. So in our business, we've already begun to see an impact from the baby boomers starting to retire and move into fixed incomes. It is absolutely imperative that we start to engage and really attract the younger generations. So I love this quote from Rob McMillan, "Wineries need to experiment and find ways to attract those new customers. Pouring by the glass in particular can enhance the opportunity for that young customer to sip and linger with their friends and enjoy an experience at their pace, without the tasting room staff becoming a nuisance or hovering over them with the next tasting pour." And what this really does is highlight the idea that we really need to customize our experiences, and by allowing by the bottle or by the glass, this gives us a critical tool to have in our tool belt and allow us to move into the future successfully.
Okay, awesome. So I think Tracy really did a nice summary about what the tasting room looks like today from her perspective as one of our leading members in our business community, and Ryan's perspective about what history has looked like and how it's transformed to where we are today. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the competitive marketplace. So Tracy alluded to, we're now finding new ways to interact with our customers. There's a new expectation with millennials coming into the market. We've got a lot of competition with craft beer and craft cocktails, so how do we continue to stay interesting to them, providing a variety of options? And then I'm also going to talk about what our competition is up to, and how it's important for us to level the playing field, to make sure that we're on the same field with everybody else. So, ways to attract new customers. Tasting rooms are starting to get very creative, because they have to be. So what you're seeing photos here, that's of Rebel Wittner's in downtown Napa. So that's right on Main Street, right across from the Archer. They're all about interaction and games. So you can go there and you can have a tasting flight by the glass, by the bottle, and hang out with your friends, play Cards Against Humanity and other card games with each other and hang out there for a while, which speaks to Tracy's point about people going to less places during the day, because they're spending more time at each of these establishments. Domain Chandon also has different things available to them where they are trying to keep people on property longer. Their average time to try to keep somebody on property is 90 minutes. So we're having to compete with all these other people trying to bring in these different ways to make the customer experience last longer. And also, our customers these days, they're more savvy, they're more educated, and the internet has a lot to do with that. And of course, they want more options. They want to be able to taste by the bottle, they want to be able to taste by the glass, and of course, having different tasting flights available as well. So what are our competitors up to? So I just chose wine country regions in Northern California, as well as every other city in Napa County. All the little dots you see on the screen there, all of those tasting rooms or wineries within those jurisdictions are able to serve by the glass or by the bottle. We're the only one that's not able to do that. They're also ahead of us a little bit in terms of providing a unique, memorable guest experience. So if you've ever been to Tank Garage in Calistoga, super memorable, kitschy, very cool. You've been to, we saw Rebel Wittner's in Napa, and they're also getting really creative with their marketing. So Lodi has five tastes for $10, and that is something that they're doing widely throughout their wine region. So the competition is pretty stiff, and that's why leveling the playing field is so important. So it's time for us to evolve. We've seen that the marketplace has evolved, we've seen that the customer has evolved, so what do those three things look like? The change in customer expectations, they're looking for unique, personalized, memorable experiences. I know I am, I know you are, and that's the way that we've evolved as customers in general. Visitation is on a decline, as you saw from Tracy's slide earlier. Boomers are retiring, and millennials are not yet engaged with wine. Also, we're visiting fewer places when we come to wine country. And then the competition is stiff. There are other wine destinations, they're much savvier now than they were before, and just in Napa Valley alone, we have 400-plus winery physical locations for us to contend with. And of course, you think about other downtown environments like Calistoga and Napa. So, once again, referencing Rob McMillan, by-the-glass pours might prove to be one a small way where wineries can particularly crack the code, allowing for new customers to linger and enjoy wine and wineries with their friends at their own pace. And so what we are asking for your help with tonight is for a modification of the municipal code. So you'll see the highlighted line there. So right now in the municipal code, it says, "Wine tasting does not include quantities greater than a two-ounce-sized pour." And this applies to anybody with a type O2 license with the ABC. So you saw the list of those tasting rooms earlier, so this applies specifically to them. It doesn't apply to people that are a wine bar. So that's Wine Country Connection, V Wine Cellars, Masonry, and K Laws. So by adjusting this one sentence, we would be able to hopefully enable our tasting rooms to pour by the glass or by the bottle. Their current ABC permit does allow them to do that. And then what are the impacts? So I'll bring Tracy up to give a business perspective of what the impacts would be or not be. not be.
So essentially, this comes down to allowing wine to be sold by the bottle and by the glass gives our tasting rooms more flexibility to customize and truly enhance the tasting experience. This will result in an overall increase to our level of hospitality and our level of customer service. We're really tailoring this and customizing this around our current membership and our current customers. And truly, we're just trying to provide a better level of hospitality to our customers. So we really don't see an overall impact in terms of parking or an increase to staff. Thank you.
So when we've been talking with our tasting rooms in town before coming to present to you this evening, we talked a lot with them about marketing this. You know, is this something that you're going to put out on social media and all your marketing materials? Hey, by the way, you know, come hang out with us and have a bottle of wine and stay all day. And it's not about that. It's about having that option available to the customer. And that's why we don't anticipate changes in terms of parking or staff, because it's not something that we want to go ahead and promote heavily. So then, of course, our feedback from our residents is incredibly important to our business community, and we want to make sure that they were included in this dialogue. So of course, we have our associate members with the Yountville Chamber of Commerce. Those are residents that are living in Yountville. They can apply to be a member with the chamber. And of course, we like to have as many as possible. So we surveyed them, and we asked them, "Would you enjoy being served wine by the glass or by the bottle in Yountville tasting rooms?" 18% responded, and every single one said yes. Huge. Not what I expected, but pretty awesome. So you'll see a couple of quotes from folks, and they all have their different perspectives, which I really love. So Pat and his wife are newlyish residents to Yountville. And I love his, "Two ounces isn't much fun." And I think that speaks perfectly to the character of our residents. You know, we love our town. We love enjoying our town, and we want to be able to enjoy glass or by the bottle in our tasting rooms. And Darlene, I love her point as well. It would give us more places to go have a nice glass of wine with friends. And isn't that 100% true? Of course, we have our wonderful restaurants and hotels to do that in, but it would be nice to open that up to our tasting rooms as well. And of course, Rob Stout, who's here with us this evening, thank you for being here. I highlighted, he gave a really nice quote to us. But this proposal would eliminate questions that, you know, wineries and tasting rooms get, that, you know, can't you pour me a glass of wine? Can't I buy a bottle? And make the experience more enjoyable for our visitors and our tasting room staff, which Tracy mentioned multiple times tonight. So those are just a few perspectives from our residents, and we were glad to hear that this is something that they would be supportive of. So that's what we've prepared for you this evening. We are available and, of course, very willing to take questions. And I'd just like to thank the other tasting rooms that are here tonight. Gerard, Priest Ranch, Handwritten, Jessup Sellers, Hill Family. And Rob and Rita, thank you for being here. Yes. Yeah, can we take questions?
Sure.
Yeah, okay, great. So we're available.
Does the council have any questions specifically? Any? Guess you don't get to take any questions. But I will invite anybody else that's in the audience if they'd like to comment or have any questions about the presentation. Whitney didn't allow you to speak, so you're not. I have a couple of questions of staff. Would there be any, you know, if the, first of all, what is the process for the council to consider a change to the code? And then I've got a couple of specific questions if we were to go down that direction. Steve?
Absolutely, Mayor. Process, if there was direction from the council to explore this, we would bring back an ordinance amendment for your consideration. And then there would be a second reading, typical process on that. And then that change would be effective 30 days thereafter.
And you've had, or have you had similar kind of anecdotal experience with other tasting rooms in other jurisdictions?
Ironic timing, but as Chair of the Napa City Managers Group, we held a joint meeting with Sonoma County managers last week. And one of our roundtable topic discussions was tasting rooms. Ironically, I was shocked, surprised to find that we were the only one that does this. And in fact, most of the other managers were surprised that we do this. So we had a good discussion, and we talked a bit about parking, various impacts, and all of the Sonoma and Napa City managers reported no significant issues. Again, you know, we have a very extensive conditional use permit process, so we have the ability. I will share that they liked our conditional use permit monitoring report, so a few of those cities may be taking some of those things back. But the reality locally from our immediate competition is we are unique and limiting that. So I also had the chance a little bit earlier to talk with extensively the city manager for McMinnville, Oregon, which is a kind of a peer destination in Oregon that the chamber has used quite a bit. Again, they allow by the glass and by the pour and have not found any negative impacts. Most all of them say that it doesn't increase visitor traffic because the visitor is there. It's an attempt, and I think what I heard loud and clear from most of the managers was that, again, it's really that customer service element and completing the whole experience, which has evolved. I do think we have a unique role. Yountville started having, we started having tasting rooms in a greater preponderance very early compared to some other areas. And I do think the historical perspective of not knowing what and not really wanting to have a monolithic wine bar scenario, that's why we have the educational pour, because that was originally how it started, and that was mimicking what was in the county at that point in time. You know, that was sort of the county. And if you remember, very early, our early tasting rooms, we closed at the same time the county did. And then we sort of morphed a little in our, early in our generation, and then we started looking at retail diversity. So I see this as a further evolution, but we have done the cursory review, and we do validate that, you know, we are alone in this and what we found in the neighboring jurisdictions is that it's not had any negative impact with the change.
And then just a question either for Gary or you, Steve. I understand that the type 2 license allows it already, so that isn't the issue. But do we have to consider, or should we consider whether this means with potentially additional alcohol consumption, would there be any impacts on food pairings? Would we need to potentially address? Because we have fairly strict rules related to onsite food consumption or preparation.
Correct. What I would say, there's two things on that regard. One, it is allowed by ABC permit, so it's a standard. In fact, almost all of the tasting rooms are allowed to do that. They're responsible as the proprietor for the safe operation of pouring and making sure that they're not over-serving their customers. So that, they already have that responsibility. I don't see that changing. This change, as requested or proposed, would not change their overall use permit. So they'd still be subject to whatever the use permit conditions they have for hours of operations, food pairing or not. We would simply, you know, elimination of that sentence would simply allow them to do actually what their full ABC license would allow them to do.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. So when did the two-ounce pour, when did the current municipal code language come online? What year?
I don't have that in front of me, to be honest.
Gary's getting it in front of him.
But I would say it's been around a lo, it's been a long time.
And prior to that, were, was bottle and glass service allowed in whatever tasting rooms we had?
Not necessarily, because I think Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Dorman, the issue came up when we were trying to discern how to, again, early, how to discern what was a tasting room environment, the education, what place did restaurants have with lounges. And at that point in time, we sort of also created a new definition of a wine bar and a bar. So I think that was, you know, the concern was the proliferation and how to separate some. So I don't know that there was a prior definition, because tasting rooms, as far as an advent coming into town, are relatively new. It wasn't really until the 2003 era.
I think we might have one of our winery owners present, oh, hello.
Hi.
I have a feeling you're going to offer some input.
My thing, Roy Eiseminger, Good Life Wine Collective. The O2 license, the ABC had some changes. Yeah, it's been several years now, but that's what changed from the two-ounce pour. Initially, a tasting room was a two-ounce pour. And then they expanded the O2 license to include by the bottle and by the glass. So that was, that was a federal deal.
Actually, Councilmember Moller reminded me of something. There was, in this, in this cycle, the last decade, ABC changed the rules that allowed for...
That's what you just said. You were busy listening over there, so.
All right, so we've got...
So at least we had consistent information. That's good.
Reinforcing.
Good. Yeah. Gary, I think, just did.
I think it was a municipal code.
Okay, so did you have any additional for the municipal code?
No, it's not clear, actually. Wouldn't have some active. My apologies.
Okay.
Okay. And on the ABC, the next to the last sentence is, "May conduct wine tastings under prescribed conditions for an O2 license." So that's the add-on that Mr. Eiseminger discussed. That's the change to the ABC license. Prior to that, it could not be a tasting room under an O2 license?
No, it could be, it just went with the two-ounce pour.
It was that the O2 license itself imposed the two-ounce requirement.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Steve?
That just, that actually triggered, we had standard language in the early licenses that said they had to be, they had to comply with their ABC license permit, which included the O2. It's now coming back to me. And when the change came in, that's what happens when you've been here a while and are beginning older. But the challenge was, ABC changed it, and the council at that point in time wanted to continue with the two-ounce education pour. And that was actually with the support of the industry at that time. I mean, we're going back a number of years, but that is the evolution there of how we got to the O2 and also why you won't find it, because we covered it by conditioning it to the ABC license permit.
I think this council's been receptive to evolving some of these regulations. As we see, certainly we hear on a regular basis, the industry has changed, not only the customer experience is even more important than ever, but the industry itself and how it needs to perform has changed. And the council, I think, has been receptive to hearing that. And if we need to be flexible, we have been open to that. Any other feedback from council at this point? Anybody? No?
Hold on.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. So is this the council discussion part?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. So what I didn't hear from the applicant and...
No applicant yet.
I'm sorry, from the chamber. What I didn't hear in the request was how this really helps the millennial experience. What I did hear from the request was, "We are behind other markets." So to me, in making these particularized millennial experiences, so to me, it's kind of a cart and horse as we consider this, because I think just, I mean, on the one hand, I'm hearing, "We're not going to really advertise this or promote it heavily, because we're just going to serve the customers who are already coming." On the other hand, I hear, "We have got to get some millennials in here," and everything I read, I have to agree with that. So therefore, we will be driving, hopefully, other customers. I kind of can't see it all coming together in my mind right now. And I don't know what actually is going to be asked of us tonight, but I don't see the pieces fitting. I don't think, and Mr. McMillan's quote of, "It may be a way to partially address the crack." And perhaps it is partially, but I think before we take 16 tasting rooms and turn them into what basically are wine bars, this, I think we need some more public outreach. I appreciate what you've done. I'm a member of the chamber. I saw the question. So I appreciate what you've done, but I think we need some more public outreach. I think we really need to look and see, will there be impacts? Because I just see too many disparate pieces. The idea is not bad to me. It's sort of the implementation and what we really can do with it.
Let me ask if I can try to find out a little bit more about your concern. Is, what is the concern? What I'm hearing from Steve and from some of the presenters is there have been no noticeable negative impacts, but are there certain ones that either you have or people have shared with you about this that would help inform us?
Yes, I think if we allow 16 tasting rooms to morph into, people can go and sit and have a glass or a bottle, and there's not a food element, I have a concern about that. I have a concern about parking, because I think we are going to try to drive new clients to it. If the thing is, we want millennials, then that's going to be new feet on our sidewalks, and that will help all of us. So those are two concerns. I also have concerns about the price points, because I don't think millennials, and it's not my business to sit up here and say what y'all's price points have to be, but millennials, Mr. McMillan said, "They're not going to come and pay $18 or $20 for a glass of wine." Five-for-10 tasting is way different from what we have here in Yountville. So my concern is, I have not heard sufficient tonight to see how this fits the Yountville model, a one-mile town where we don't, I think that our town manager used the word "monolithic." I think we would become even more monolithic if we allow all of this without some sort of additional information coming in of, "This is what we see as our end game, and this is not exactly how we're going to achieve it, but this is somewhat how we're going to achieve it," and some public outreach.
So just to be clear, we're not taking any action tonight. There's a request that's being presented by the chamber and members of our business community to consider this, which we can do. In my response to your comments, I would say there's absolutely a need and desire to enhance the customer experience, which doesn't necessarily mean more people are going to come here and more people are going to sit there and get drunk at a tasting room, because they now can have five ounces instead of two. Instead of five glasses with two ounces in them, they might have one glass with five ounces in them. It changes the experience, because you no longer have to have somebody serving them five times in the same experience, potentially. I don't see, I mean, if we're talking about a younger generation that doesn't even want to own a car, we continue to talk about whether there are parking regulations that are also outdated that need to be revisited, because people are driving and parking differently. That's a little bit of a side conversation, but one of the things that I think Yountville has always prided itself on is a high level, if not better than all others, level of service. Hospitality is what we do better than just about anybody. And I do think that this is something that just is outdated and is not reacting to, not only the business experience, but the kind of experience we would like to have. Without identifying where I now go, when I have a meeting to sit down and have a glass of wine with somebody, it's not in a tasting room, because I'm not interested in having a flight of five wines when I'm having a conversation. The images that we saw are of people having a broader experience than just standing at a bar. And I remember those days. When I moved here 20 years ago, that's what everyone did. You literally elbowed your way up to a bar, and you got to pour, and then that associate went down, five people, and poured, and then came back and poured again. I'm like, "What am I having? I don't even know what I'm drinking." So the education piece wasn't really there. I think there has been a refinement and even an evolution of the service delivery that should include at least us considering a more complete experience with, again, it's a five-ounce glass of wine or a bottle. And they still, all the folks here and those that are in the rest of our tasting rooms, have the same strict adherence to alcohol consumption. So I don't, I get, years ago, when there was a concern that ironically, Yountville was founded on... So I don't, I, I get, years ago, when there was a concern that ironically, Yountville was founded on basically bars and taxis. So that, that kind of sticks in my head of, no, we're not going back to the days where it's just somewhere where you go and drink. But to have a more complete social experience is, I think, what we're talking about here. Some of the concerns that we have had are, if it adds employees, we're concerned because that means more parking potentially, and some places just can't handle more parking. I don't see this request adding to either of those issues. I certainly like your idea of, now that we're talking about this in a public forum, hearing more from our residents. We certainly got some data from the presentation about chamber associates and locals that, that like this idea. So I want to make sure we're identifying what the concerns might be for us to make this kind of a change. And if they're insurmountable, then so be it. But if not, I'm certainly open to having, having this consideration. Councilmember Dorman?
Just to, I've been told in the past I don't talk enough, so I'm going to make up for it now. So just to respond to some of those concerns, which I, I understand, and up to this point, I really didn't know if there was really a need for this in Yountville as well. And surprisingly enough, people at my office hours are, were in full support of it, which I did not expect at all. What's interesting, though, is to, first of all, discuss the millennials. I'm in the hospitality business. That's all I do. And all we want to do is get the millennials to, into my hotel room. But all the millennials want an experience. And that's all that anybody talks about anymore. That's why I took my hotel independent amongst franchises, is to give the millennials a local experience. Same thing with the tasting rooms. The millennials are looking for an experience. They're looking for a story. They're looking for 90 minutes to sit down and get to know you. They want a connection. They want a connection from every business that they go to and every choice that they make. TripAdvisor is moving away from a comment platform to an experience platform. And Airbnb has taught them that through their marketing, because the millennials want an experience. And through, through what, oh, excuse me, let me back up. Very good on using local serving and parking in your presentation. Gold star for that. But in looking at that presentation, that's exactly what the millennials are expecting. So they can go to the prisoner. I'm going to go on record as saying they're not going to the prisoner for the wine. I'm sorry. They're going for that experience. And they put a lot of money into that property and changed it to Franciscan because they know what the current person is looking for. And that's exactly what they're looking for. So in terms of the millennials, the opportunity for them probably to sit down and have a glass of wine is making that connection and that experience. Also, you know, you know, I, I've talked to a lot of locals as well about red not being occupied. And a lot of them had said, oh, they heard there was a lounge going in in there. And everybody loves that idea of a lounge experience as opposed to a restaurant, a place where the locals can go and just hang out, not fight three-deep at the bar at certain restaurants in town, or get there at, you know, 3:00 on a Tuesday so they can have a seat. And, you know, and that's one of the things that interests me about this because pretty much all the wineries that are here, it creates a lounge experience for our locals as well. Just to reference you saying that there's possibility that we would need food because now they're having a glass of wine. As anybody knows, I tend to go out in this town. I tend to sit at bars, and I can see as many people eating as those bars as who are having a glass of wine, not having food and moving on as well. And then I, we all love to talk about parking. And I think that is an interesting point that will need to be presented when and if this comes up to the council of what the staff's interpretation is of parking needs. I have my opinions, but we can wait and hold off on those until, until staff discusses that. But i- it's just interesting how the dynamics have changed because at first, when I heard that this was coming up, I didn't see a need for it. But as I've talked to locals, as I've heard the presentations, a lot of what has been said, I think, at least merits the opportunity for this to come forward to the council. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mueller, any comments on the topic?
Well, to me, I, I see this topic as much broader than five ounces in Yountville. I, I really kind of look at this countywide. And what I see, and I think we've all seen, just a major change in what a winery even is. There are now, every one of them believes, and I'm not going to, I'm not a wine marketer at all, so I'm not going to say I believe it or I don't believe it, but they believe that they have to sell directly to the customer. And there's no more middleman anymore. And to do that, they have to drive a lot of people to the wineries. They have to stay a lot longer. They have to have an experience. Just from my own personal view, I can barely get into any of those anymore because you can't get into one without a $100 tasting fee. And, you know, quite frankly, you know, I'm not buying a bottle of wine. If I like something, I buy a case, and I do it all the time. I probably bought four or five this weekend alone. So I, I am, I, I definitely buy wine, and I want to taste what's out there. So that's, but, you know, I, I am concerned from, I know we're talking about wine by the glass in Yountville, but I, I'm very concerned because I, I don't really think there has been sufficient thought. And I think as leaders, we do need to provide that thought. Hope the county board of supervisors is listening to me now. But these wineries that have turned into event centers and are restaurants, and I'm a member at one, and I go there, and you're, you know, they serve me a whole meal. And tasting fees are very expensive, but I happen to like their wine. I have concern about what that really means. I would, a lot of the slides I saw today, I would really want to study those. I know that by looking at data, you can make one conclusion, or you can maybe make another conclusion. So I, I haven't been compelled by a quick flash of a bunch of slides by me yet either. So I, I think this needs a lot more thought before I could make a decision and, you know, are we really creating an experience? Again, as somebody mentioned, by not even telling people, we have that experience available to you? Or are we really just trying to keep people in tasting room longer, as much like the, the wineries are doing throughout, you know, Napa County? Keep them there, give them more alcohol, and they will buy more. So I don't know. I'm just, I think it's very thought-provoking, and I'm certainly not ready to make a decision at all.
We're not, we're not here to make a decision tonight, so that's good.
But even about whether, right now, I'm, I'm kind of leaning towards, I'd like to think about it a lot more before I would really want it to come forward as a council item.
Vice Mayor, hold on just a second. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. So this is a question for, to the town manager. Is there a process? Or what is the process that we take what we hear tonight, we get some more information before you ask us for a head nod of, do you want me to bring forward an ordinance on the municipal code? So that we could have public engagement and study or whatever, self-education?
In all candor, I would need more input and direction from you all on what other information and things you're seeking so that I could work with the, the chamber and the tasting rooms. I mean, I don't, I, I would need some better understanding about what more you would like to provide in order to work on that.
Since this is a little bit more of a loose presentation, I'll invite Mr. Hill, if you want to come back up.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Dorman and Councilmember Mueller, I just wanted to address your questions about price. And I'm with you. I've seen the, the slides illustrated it perfectly. If you go back in time, the price of a tasting fee has gone up dramatically. And most wineries, when you offer a tasting, there's usually a flight of three or four wines. That makes the winery open up three to four bottles on a daily basis. And you had mentioned the price of a glass of wine versus a tasting. If we went back to that slide, most tastings far exceed the price of what I think my peers in this town would want to charge for a glass of wine. And the comment that you made about millennials specifically, I could see a millennial wanting to consume an 11, $10 to $12 glass of rosé rather than committing to a full tasting that's $25 to $65. And on behalf of a lot of the residents in town that just want to stop by as opposed to spending 90 minutes, and after all, we're trying to be more local serving, sometimes they just want to stop by and have a quick glass. And we can't offer them that right now. But I think that the price of a glass would definitely draw in more millennials than it currently does.
Thanks. Any other members of the public, now that you've heard some dialogue from the council? Normally, you don't get this chance, so. Yeah, see? There you go. We need to have you come up to chat, though.
I'm Rita Simpkey. I just have a question. You, you do have a choice. These facilities will have a choice if someone wants to do a tasting or have a glass or have a bottle. So the choice is still with the public. The public has the option to say, I'd rather do a five, you know, five tasting of two ounces or whatever, rather than a full glass. So you're, you're giving the public a choice of what they would like. And personally, as a resident in the town, we belong to a lot of wineries all over the valley. But we do not belong to any here in our town because, quite frankly, I haven't really had the opportunity to taste the full impact of their wines. But we would do that, we would do that because we could sit there and have just one glass of wine or more to, to find out if we really enjoy the wines of this tasting room. And I, I think, I think it would be a big boon to, boom to the locals, of course. But the fact that the other people coming in the, the vans, girls' night, a girls' weekend in Yountville, they may not want to do a full glass of wine. They want to do the tastings. And that's, that's great. If you have a choice for everybody, what's wrong with that? So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? Last chance. Okay. I, I did want to respond to a couple of the comments that have been made by council. And one of them is, I know pretty much everybody that's here from the industry and have, at some point, been club members, I think, with everybody here. And I'm not with any now. And part of that is because I've kind of had the experience in the tasting room. And there is not a different option for me to come in and experience. So I think I'm probably a typical local in that regard, that I'm now going somewhere else and drinking wine that's from outside of Yountville and outside of even Napa Valley sometimes, when I would like to be in, supporting a local business. But I'm doing it in a neutral, kind of a neutral location now. I think this would provide us an opportunity, as some of our local residents have already testified, to provide more local experiences, to enjoy what we do so well here, which is wine, potentially with a reasonable food pairing, an educational food pairing. I think we also have to recognize that we are competing with wineries. I know that the ongoing debate of whether they should be having the kind of experiences at wineries that some of them do. Wineries have gotten much more creative in how they're drawing people in. But we, as a town and the other cities in the county, have accepted for decades of the responsibility of providing tastings in tasting rooms. Part of it is to reduce those trips out into the county and to wineries and get people off the roads and get them into our cities and town to have a broader city and town experience. And I think it's obvious that has worked very well for us because we have a number of wineries that we do. And I believe still to this day, there hasn't been a single winery in the 20 years, 21 years that I've lived here that has actually failed because of a lack of business. If you don't own a property and you don't own a lease, that's a different situation. But I do think that there is a shift in the market, which isn't really my main reason for wanting to consider this. It's really more about evolving this industry and letting it be successful to the degree it already is, frankly, by, by law. We put on a restriction that may have been appropriate 15 or 20 years ago, but I just don't know that it's appropriate anymore. And I don't see it changing the experience in town, frankly, much, if at all. Like I said, having a flight of five, two ounces versus one glass of five ounces is not making people drink more alcohol. But it does allow people, as we just heard, have one more option for the experience. So I certainly want to see this come to the council for consideration sometime in the near future. Typically, we let that process play out rather than refusing to let something come forward. If we hear from our local, either residents or businesses, in some cases, that's both, we let that play out in an application and/or a consideration of modification of our rules. So I would like to see that conversation happen. I'm not sure how much more information I would need to hear. I don't see the negative consequences that some might be concerned about. I don't think this impacts parking. I don't think it impacts employee headcount. I don't think this impacts negatively alcohol consumption. And I just brought up the idea of whether we need to consider food pairings just based on what ABC license says. That's not something I, I'm that concerned about. I do think it just offers more of an opportunity for our businesses to be successful. And why wouldn't we consider that? So other, other thoughts from the council?
And I'd be willing to give guidance to the town that I'd, I'd be willing to consider this, to have the town bring this to the council. And I don't know the right word, but I think we do need to discuss parking, simply because it wouldn't be a council meeting without a parking discussion. But the presentation did bring up parking. The vice mayor expressed concern for parking. So I still think it's worth having a overview on what parking means from a wine tasting experience to a wine bar experience and what those differences are. So, but I would like to see this brought to the council.
One other thing, Steve, and I don't see Nathan here, and Sandra's out, I know. If we can drill down a little bit more, and I, I know the information from the presentation about not only the Napa County cities and, and the fact that they're allowing it, but our neighboring jurisdictions. I know the city of Sonoma, I believe, has passed a moratorium on tasting rooms. And I don't know if others in Sonoma County have considered it. But I'm wondering if we could find out from their staff what the reasons were for wanting moratoriums. Was it strictly retail diversity issue? Was it, we're having problems with tasting rooms? Or if you know that already?
I know the answer. I'd be happy to give it to you.
You just met with the city managers from over there.
It is not the consequences of the tasting room and the activity. It is the same discussion that we had eight to 10 years ago. You know, Healsburg, Sonoma, similar to Yountville, Calistoga, St. Helena, there's a small core footprint of the business. And the concern that's driving the moratorium, especially in Sonoma, is the rapid proliferation of them coming in and displacing other businesses. It is not the behavior and the consequences of the tasting room. It's the same thing we've had the conversation about. The wine industry is willing to pay more to rent the space than other businesses. So that, that's what's driving the conversation. They're a decade behind us on when that first came to light. You know, they're looking at, right now, a moratorium. They're looking at a block limit. They have some different structures. They have a square, and then they go several blocks in each direction. So they can do some things different that we're looking at. So that's part of the conversation there. Healsburg is looking at, they're actually looking at some of our retail diversity components. But, so again, it's the saturation cap, not the behavior. It's the fact that, you know, we're not, unlike a city of Napa, which has additional retail areas, most of these communities have a finite, fixed most of these communities have a finite fix space of retail. And they're just finding that the opinion is simply too many tasting rooms losing other things.
Thank you. I would, I would support having this on the agenda for consideration, either, I'm just looking at the date, May twenty-one or June four. May seven, we already have our envisioned Yountville general plan. So I do not want to add anything that's not extremely time-sensitive to that night. But I would, it sounds like at least council member Durham, and maybe we all are supportive of at least having the dialogue. We're not, we're not saying yes or no tonight. And we are interested in hearing more feedback from the public, which we always do. So I'd like to see us put this on the agenda, let everyone know, the businesses will know, the residents will know. And we will hear before that night and during that night how people feel about it.
I'm not in support of that.
Okay. Flash Mary, any last thoughts?
I think everybody knows who knows me. I'm always the one to say, let's bring it forward, let's at least talk about it. And I, I do believe that is true now. Now, whether June fourth is the date, I'm not sure. I really do have a lot of questions. And, and I think one of the main ones is, what else are the businesses going to do? What's their skin in the game? Just being frank with everybody. Because a glass and a bottle is not going to solve whatever problems are out there. And I haven't really heard what problems are out there. So all that to say, I am supportive of putting it on an agenda for further discussion. I'm not sure how that would play out if the discussion is, staff has prepared an ordinance that takes out two-ounce tastings. Or if the discussion should be, let's have one more round of discussion, and then maybe staff will prepare an ordinance. So I'm, I'm kind of open on both ends of that.
Well, I think as part of a discussion about an ordinance change, we could have the conversation at the same time. Whether it's June four, May twenty-one, or another date, I'm not asking for a date certain, because there might be some time that's needed, especially as we have the general plan wrapping up. But I don't want to wait unnecessarily. In the meantime, we can have all kinds of, you know, local feedback, business feedback, to hear more perspectives. But I think we should address this sooner than later, and leave it up to Steve to pick the right agenda that gives us enough time so that we can have as much community dialogue as possible. But I would certainly not ask for another presentation and then put off an ordinance change. Would this modification require two meetings anyway, Gary, to change the ordinance, or would it be one action?
So there's be a first and a second reading?
Right. So there would be potentially two, two nights of meetings required for the ordinance change, if there is one.
Yeah, I would just add to, the distinction in the zoning code between a wine tasting room and a wine bar would now be collapsed. And a wine bar would be allowed in some zones and is prohibited in others. So we, there'd be quite a few revisions, is what I'm saying.
That's why I want to stay away from a date certain, in case as you get into this, you see some inconsistencies or commonalities in the ordinances that need to be addressed. And it could be, frankly, it could be that some tasting rooms that are in certain areas that may not, and I don't know that this is the case, but if there are some that are a zone that doesn't support what we consider a wine bar, and others do, are in a zone, then we have to look at that possibility as well. Okay, so I think you're hearing at least two of the council, or three, actually, to move forward on this. And we can individually provide you additional feedback, Steve. I think the staff is working on.
I think I would encourage that sooner rather than later, so that I can either do the research on the staff then, or reach out to the tasting room industry to find out the answers to the questions you're asking.
Right.
I also would ask when we do that, that I, I appreciate you mayor saying not a date certain, because I, I speak selfishly for myself. I really do want to have time to think this through and look at this, because certainly the wine bar tasting room issue has already occurred to me, and how we negotiate that on top of whatever else might be the other moving pieces. So, thank you.
Okay. Anything else, Gary?
No.
Okay, well, there we go. There's a presentation. Thank you all. Thanks for the dialogue. Appreciate it. To be continued. All right. Next up, Samantha has taken her position. I have a feeling we're going to lose some of our audience, Samantha. Do not take it personally. But please write down all their names. We're watching all of you. So we do have item eight B, which is our Parks and Recreation Department 2018 annual report.
Good evening. Got to follow that. This is, thanks Chad for staying. Appreciate that. So I am excited to be here tonight to give you our 2018 annual report. So just as a little recap, we used to come before you after summer and a little bit in the fall, and kind of break some key programming up for you. And two, three years ago, we started doing an annual report based on not the fiscal year, but the annual year for Parks and Recreation, and share with you some of the things that we've done and achieved over the past year. Obviously, you see us or see me during the budget process, and get to hear about what we're planning, but coming back to you with statistics. And I know a lot of you do participate and see the things we're doing, but just to share with you in the public in a very transparent way what we do with what, what you give us every year in the budget process. So I have to remember to flip the slides. So we had a strategic planning retreat for the Yountville Parks and Recreation Department this past fall. And we decided to update our mission statement slightly to offer healthy, cost-effective, and innovative opportunities for community connection. Excuse me, of course, right now. To call in my throat. And so the part that changed there specifically was for community connection. And so we felt like it was really important to call that out, specifically our team of five full-time staff. Thank you, Michelle. Our team of five really agreed that, that is really what we're here to do, is provide opportunities for our community to connect. So we're going to go through, I think coughed all day. There, I, I break it up by our budget areas. And so all of the information contained in here are just little snapshots of what you saw in the full report, which hopefully you had a minute to read through. So our administrative and services area, the accomplishments last year, some of the key ones were the finalization of the Towny Yountville Community Foundation. We do a lot with Yountville Arts, mainly coming from the administration side of our department. And so we had a lot of great progress coming out of that, that's not necessarily contained within the arts portion of the report. We processed over five thousand registrations, individual registrations in our software program. So that's pretty significant for us. We held the strategic planning retreat for the department in the fall. And a big, great project was the Faces of Freedom sculpture that we, our department was very involved in that process throughout, throughout the whole, from initiation in the ad hoc committee to the installation of it. So I see that as a big accomplishment. For 2019, the things we're working on is looking at an online facility scheduler. So through our current system ASAP, they have another module that we are looking at for park rentals and the community center as well, where people can look online and see if it's available, and even reserve it that way. Most likely not reserve the community center, but for park rentals. Also working on improving our volunteer program and potentially expanding that. We have to include people that, you know, would be greeters at the community center. And we have some people in the community we've, that work for the Chamber of Commerce, who've come in and said, well, why can't we do stuff like this here? We do have a lot of bathroom traffic. So lots of people to chat up. So we're analyzing ways to, you know, see if we can productively use volunteer time at the front desk and in other ways as well. I'm very excited about DocuSign, something Michelle is spearheading, but how that could potentially impact especially our administration and services budget with contracts and permits and lots of different things. So I'm super excited about that. And we're always looking for new ways to go paperless. So one thing we're implementing this summer is an iPad system at the front desk with a paperless registration. So people are filling out a piece of paper for registration and waiver signature, that they're able to do that on an iPad. So currently working on training staff to implement that. So the next thing we'll talk about is day camps. So we offer day camps, obviously through the summer, but really any major break with the school district. So that includes winter break, spring break, Thanksgiving, and then, of course, summer. So in 2018, we premiered an older camper program as part of Camp Wyville. So really trying to serve that really nine, ten, eleven, twelve-year-old age group that can tend to not want to come to camp because it's boring, or it's, we do have a significant amount of young children that use our services there. So marketing that we really were programming a separate little area in, in programming ideas for older kids. So we did see some, a little bit of growth in that. We're going to continue that this year. And then we continue with our partnerships. They're very strong with the Veterans Home, doing different co-activities with the Veterans Home. We go up and play bingo. The Creative Arts Center, they make birdhouses that the kids get to paint. So it's great to have that intergenerational activity there. And then the library as well. The, the garden up at the Veterans Home. So some great partnerships that way. So for 2019, you know, you've heard this ongoing saga with us for a long time about difficulties behind staffing, recruitment, and retention. And so we're working on ways to evolve that. I currently am just, in the last two weeks, managing my first Snapchat ad for, for employee recruitment, which I laugh about because you choose a demographic. And although I am on Snapchat, I don't get to see my actual ad because I'm not in that demographic that I set. And then we're also using different online services like Indeed. And instead of relying on email, really texting applicants back instead of just relying on emails. So trying to figure out creative ways to really connect with the generation that we're trying to recruit. Also, we have worked with the city of Napa on a swimming alternative. Obviously, swimming is an important part of summer camp. We would visit the Yountville Community Pool twice a year. So not operating the pool is an impact for camp. But we are, like I said, been talking with the city of Napa. We'll be visiting one of their community pools once a week and using our amazing public transportation system in order to do so. So we'll see our first summer doing that. Before coming here to Yountville, I was very used to moving very large numbers of kids around the city of Napa on public transportation. Garrett's a little nervous, but I, I think we got this. And then we're also working on a waste reduction plan. So in day camps, we use, we feed the kids two snacks a day, and then we have water going consistently. And so we're working on ways to reduce the amount of waste that we create. So some reusable things, and then obviously ramping up and paying more attention to food waste recycling. Not really, it's not recycling food waste. What's the word, Margie? What do we do with food waste? Yeah. And then, and also our, our recycling onsite as well. So a few statistics. In 2018, we had seven hundred and forty-five total campers register in our summer camps and break camps. A hundred and forty-seven of those were residents, which I think is pretty good considering the amount of children that we know are living here in Yountville. And our revenue for the year was just under a hundred and fifteen thousand. So we continue to see some growth there. We do raise the fees each year by CPI. You can stop me anytime if you have questions, or I'll just keep going. So the next area is the community center facility rental. So in 2018, we continued to work with a lot of local nonprofits and added a few. So they tend to use our facility for fundraisers, and then also for meetings and, and different aspects of things that they're doing to serve the community. It seems to be a really great area of growth for us. So we're continuing with that. We replaced the stage, the aging stage drapes with the movable wall, with the help of our Public Works Department. And we did see some increase in rentals, which I'll go into in a minute. So for 2019, we're continuing to balance use. So we have a lot of programming going on at the community center, which I'll talk about in a minute. And so how do we balance that with the need to rent the facility and raise revenue like that, too? So we're, we always are in discussion on how to balance that and, and make sure that we're not displacing classes in order to serve rental customers, but having the facility available for rentals as well. We're currently working on some lighting updates with our Public Works Department. And also a project is the emergency generator that would ensure that the community hall and center would be powered in the event of an emergency automatically, and not having to wait for the portable generator to come. We're also going to be working on some different ways of looking at our rental packages, so making it more of a turnkey facility for people who do want to pay that premium, to have the building set up for themselves, or to have a catering choice. And so we're really going to be moving forward with that. Not to necessarily replace offering just the building for people who want to have, you know, their aunts make all the food, and the family will come set it up, but to supplement that for kind of that other end of the customer base who would love a destination wedding in Yountville, but maybe doesn't want to pay the, the food and beverage minimum at the hotels, but can find a better space with us. So a few statistics I show you in the report, quite a few, six years' worth of data. But last year, we had a hundred and one rentals of the facility totaling just over a hundred and forty thousand in revenue. We offered thirty-eight fee waiver and sponsorship events. So those are meetings or other partnership activities that, that Steve approves that we're able to work with the event holder. Typically, they don't pay a rental fee, but they pay for any staff time or cleaning fee or hard costs. So that value is forty, fifty-four thousand dollars last year of those fee waiver and sponsored events. So the community pool, we were open last summer. So we did have a report for 2018. One of our goals was to provide you and the public with a five-year forecast of what the financials and the participation levels could potentially look like, which we did that and brought that before you. And then also, we felt that even just staffing the pool was an accomplishment last year. As you remember, Jennifer Carvalho moved over to be the onsite pool manager. It was, it was very difficult for our department. And we feel like having even just really gotten the pool open last year was, was an accomplishment. So really for 2019 is to successfully transfer operations back to the Veterans Home, which we're currently working on that. And not on here is to promote and offer the, the resident pool reimbursement program. So the before and after school program, obviously offered here at the Yountville Elementary School, as you know. In 2018, we transitioned to Garrett, our new recreation coordinator in charge of that program, in place of the retiring Ms. Carroll. So that was a, a big accomplishment, because parents, you know, they don't like change. We also evolved in our monthly billing updates. And so Garrett and Stacy work together now on monthly billing, which is working really well. And we also began a new enrichment program in partnership with the PTA, the Yountville Parent Club and the school. We offered it on Wednesdays, which our students in the after-school program got to participate in, as well as any other student at the school could sign up for it as well. And that went very well. And so for 2019, our goals are to grow that enrichment program. Again, you'll see that same waste reduction goal mirrors the summer camp. And we have a goal to enroll fifty percent of the students at the school. So current enrollment at the school, I believe, is one hundred and twenty-two students. So I'm not sure what that estimate is for next year, but. So for, it's kind of awkward, because we, we weigh it by school year on here. So the 2017-18 school year, so that means it would have ended in June of 2018. We had a two hundred and forty-eight student enrollments in the homework club. So obviously, that number looks weird, because I just said there's a hundred and twenty kids, right? But these numbers are monthly enrollments, just so that you can kind of put it into perspective. So two hundred and forty-eight monthly enrollments for homework club, a hundred and thirty-six for full-time care. And then we continue to offer breakfast club, which starts at seven-thirty for families who need that service. So our revenue in last school year was just under ninety, just over ninety-four thousand. So leisure programs, this area contains all of our classes and excursions, including the Golden Ticket Program. So in 2018, our Golden Ticket Program growth was one of our largest accomplishments. And really just overall, the number and variety of classes that we offered in, in 2018. So we saw a continued expansion of that. For 2019, we are looking to increase our partnerships. So looking for other agencies or classes, or excuse me, class instructors and possibly partnering with other municipalities that offer senior services and see how we can better work together. And we're also going to be working on a speaker series, potentially with Yountville Arts and some other partners to offer a speaker series for adults. So statistically, leisure programs, so again, this is Golden Ticket. Any of our other classes that are open to anybody as well as our excursions. We served 6,325 residents. So that was the number of registrations. And then 3,373 non, so just under 10,000. This is one of our largest areas of resident service in our leisure program. So we serve 65% of that was, was resident service, which was, is pretty significant for our little town. Our recreation class and excursion revenue is just under $102,000. Pretty successful. We continue to see gross, growth there. So our sports programs, we currently offer open gym basketball, open gym pickleball. And then we still have our mini sports programs. So in 2018, our, our, we spent a lot of time working with the Public Works Department on the outdoor sports court renovation. And then we continue to saw, see great success with our open gym programs. For 2019, I say scheduling, we just really are always looking at. We serve a lot of residents in our open gym programs and so that is a free service for them. Open gym program is free for residents. So when we're staffing our staff at night and on the weekends, it's just a, a cost to open the building. And so how do we, how are we strategic in that, especially during the months where it's, it's warm and sunny out, where those four new outdoor pickleball courts could be better utilized? And in adjusting our schedule seasonally to make sure that we're operating in the best way we can. And then also working on partnerships, the City of Napa is really pushing some growth for pickleball. And it come, kind of comes back to scheduling as well, not scheduling overlapping gym times for pickleball. Because a lot of our people go down there and a lot of their people come up here. So we're able to better partner and schedule. So we had 41 mini sport kids last year, just under 3,500 open gym basketball drop-ins and just under 3,500 open gym pickleball drop-ins in 2018. So community events, we, we do a lot of events. It's pretty awesome. So in 2018, we raised sponsorships for our Movies in the Park that covered 80% of the cost of that program, which is pretty significant. We continue to evolve with the Residents Bash in partnering with the Chamber of Commerce. Just have a really successful model where, you know, they assist us with getting our vendors that night or our, our local restaurants and wineries to come out and serve our residents. So they've been instrumental in the success of that. We saw our, our largest Music in the Park season as far as the number of people coming out to take, take advantage of that. And we had our largest campout ever in 2018. So for 2019, we're really working on sponsorship packages, so not just for Movies in the Park, but also Music in the Park. We're looking at how do we diversify really what we're offering? So a diverse, diversity in the music, the bands that we offer. How do we, you know, kind of bring in different people and, and make it an experience that not just our residents, but obviously drawing in people from outside of town is important for a lot of what we do too. But, you know, providing something different for our, for our people coming to our events. We've heard a lot, not a lot, but quite a few feedback and something that last year someone said to me at the Bash, "I didn't think kids were welcome at this. Why are there children here?" And I was like, "Oh, wait a minute." It is a Residents Bash and whoa, we have kids in Yountville. So we're looking at ways to make the Bash more family-friendly this year. So how do we encourage more children's activities and welcome families to come and, and attend the event and not feel like it is just about the wine and the food? So some, working on that. And just how do we evolve some of our events? So I'll be coming to you in the next month with just an informational report about the outcome of the survey that we conducted, the event survey that we conducted to give you some information on what our community is saying about our events and what potential changes that we might be looking at in the future. We're going to be taking that to the P RAC in May and then come before the council with that information as well. So just some numbers for you. So Movies in the Park, we saw, these are estimated, obviously we don't like hand-click everybody, but 1,700 people, Yountville Days, Music in the Park, the Community Tree Lighting, the Campout, Residents Bash, Halloween, Fourth of July fireworks, our Bridge Group, Eight Weeks of Summer, Popcorn Wednesdays, that I can count, how many popcorn bags we give out? But this is just a quick snapshot for you of, you know, this isn't even all of our events, but the number of things that we provide. And the thing that's interesting when you look at this is this is all free to our community. So we don't charge people to do any of these things that we have listed. So another big area for our department is Yountville Arts. We help, over-help to administer that, all volunteer and very active commission. So we supported 72 artists last year. And so those are artists at our events, in the gallery and also on the art walk. Were instrumental in the Faces of Freedom Sculpture. We were, we acquired and purchased a sidewalk judge. They started the planning process for the Hearts of Yountville Program, which you'll see the first installation of that probably within the next week. And we went from a five to a seven-member commission last year. So we have a lot of great momentum going for 2019. It's interesting, so we, I think we have made a huge splash with our two added members. So we're really lucky to have Amy, who has just taken our, our online marketing to a whole nother level, but making sure that that's sustainable for the future. Because as we know, commissioners come and go. And then working to better diversify the sculpture entries and how do we get the word out about our art walk call for entries more broadly? And then also focusing on added partnerships as well for Yountville Arts. So I'll wrap it up for you. These are just, we offer 41 different programs, classes and events each month. And that doesn't even take into consideration the summer camp or the after-school program. That's like solely at the community center or open for the community. That's 84 hours of programming each week, if you average it out across the year. And again, that's not summer camp or after-school. It's pretty significant. When I go through and add up all of these things that I talked to you about before, we provided over 75,000 people with the opportunity to connect. And that may not be individual people, but 75,000 opportunities for that connection. And it doesn't even include, because we can't count them, the people that visit our parks or the people that just really enjoy the art walk when they're in town. And we don't count the people who come in and use our public restroom that, you know, it's not just they come and use our public restroom. Like everyone who comes in our door is greeted and they may got a cup of coffee or a bag of popcorn or go in and look at a magazine or pick up a Yountville Sun. So I just really want to leave you and every year, I mean, I know we get to talk about it in the budget process, but that we really value in our department what you're, what you allow us to do here. And we have a great team of people that are very passionate about it. And I think, and I, I am very proud of what we do every day. And then when I look at the statistics that I get to provide to you that I'm even more blown away by, by what we achieve in all honesty. And I, and I really hope that you leave here feeling like that too. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments from the presentation? Councilmember Durham?
My mother calls me quarterly because she knows when the catalogs are going to come out. And she lives in Napa and I can say she probably doesn't know too much of the parks and wreck there, but lives by what's going on here. And I think that speaks volumes to what you've put together, so thank you very much.
Hey, Councilmember Mueller?
Just also want to echo everything that you do. I, I know we give you money and thanks for thanking us. But what you do on the money that you get is actually quite remarkable, so. And your entire staff, so thank you very much.
Vice Mayor.
And with me, you have achieved your goal. I'm blown away. Thank you for everything.
You're probably fortunate that I don't come in every Wednesday and eat all of the popcorn that you have. Because I'm like that. You know, I'll be curious to see how this whole community pool thing rolls out and, and how many people come forward. It feels like we're losing a real asset. I know it's been very challenging though for years to, to staff it and, and to do that. So as I've said about a variety of topics, we adapt and we are flexible. And sometimes that's more of a negative situation, but you've handled that. It was, you know, a really positive idea to provide support for our families that still want to engage their kids and adults getting together, enjoying summer swim time. So even that where it was more of a bummer, really doing a great job of providing high level of service to our residents. And that's great. It's easy for us to appreciate all of the successes, but even sometimes when it's a little bit more challenging. Great job. Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, I think we're getting to prayer time. No public hearings, but we're going to go into our administrative item, master fee schedule update. The first of two presentations.
First of two, and thank you for, for that great presentation. I attended an excursion this year and it was wonderful, so I would encourage everyone to try it. So I'm here to talk about the master fee schedule. And I know we have two items. I'm talking about the first item. So before we go in and discuss the two fees that we'll be discussing in the staff report, I'd like to give just a little bit of background and context about the master fee schedule because I know we don't talk about it all the time. So the master fee schedule was initially established with Resolution Number 2973-11. And it's updated on an annual basis in accordance with the Yountville Municipal Code. So the purpose of the master fee schedule is to provide a comprehensive listing of all the fees that are associated with the town. And in, the general premise of establishing a fee includes an initial extrapolation of the costs. And then we would bring that item to the town council to get some direction and feedback. I believe you did that earlier with the cannabis fee that we had and the, the other permits that the Planning Department brought. So that's kind of how the fees are put onto the master fee schedule. So one thing that I want to remind everyone is that because it's a comprehensive document, not all the fees are going to be increased by the CPI. So an example of that is the utility rates. So those are set by a separate resolution. And I've actually outlined that in the upcoming master fee schedule. So just a little bit of background that you'll see some of them increase by the CPI and some of them won't increase by the CPI based on how they're established. And so I'm coming here to talk to you today about two specific fees. And that's why it's an administrative item, because you have a resolution in front of you. So those two fees are the removal of all of the fees associated with a pool as the pool will be closing. So we're asking permission to remove those fees. And then we're also asking permission to increase the deposit under the Planning and Building Department for the planning deposit amount appeals. So just as a reminder, the way that the deposits work, especially for this fee is that it's done by actual cost. So a deposit is required and then they either pay the difference or get refunded the difference. So in this case, we're just asking to increase the cost from 500 to 2,000 dollars. And that's my staff report. So if you have any questions, please, I, I welcome your questions.
Thank you. Specific questions? Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there any flexibility in the 2,000 dollars? Because I, I know I corresponded with you and Mr. Steele prior to the meeting. And the appeals we've handled lately have been 6,000 and 10,000, I think, in staff time and, and other costs. So the 2,000 is not covering it, but I do have concerns that going from 500 to 2,000 might make it problematic for some of our residents to appeal, because that's a big jump. So is there flexibility in the 2,000 if we approve it tonight? I mean, how will that work?
I'll let Steve answer that.
The answer is yes. Staff is recommending a higher amount because it is our experience that we found. And we did have some very challenging appeals to the council. What I would suggest is if you feel that 2,000 is too high, you can consider a different number. You know, if 1,500 sounds more appropriate. It's still a deposit, so it's still going to be, you know, the, the point upfront is to try to get enough money because a person that is appealed and lost really does not like getting a bill. So we're just trying, it's a bad customer service experience from that standpoint. So, you know, we're recommending the 2,000 based on what we're seeing as the higher cost of, of coming. Most of these have been commercial appeals with one exception on the ADU. And we anticipate that that may not be an uncommon thing. ADUs will come and go in terms of, you know, when we see it. But we did see a little bit of experience, but we're not wed to 2,000, no.
But even though, let's say we leave it at 2,000, there's still this flexibility if someone comes in and says, "I want to appeal. I only have $500 for a deposit." Do we, are you invested with that authority to, to work with him on it?
I don't think so, the way you're describing it, no. I don't think I have the ability to reduce the deposit the way you're describing.
Agreed.
So I have another question related to that then. So if you get their $2,000 check, do you actually cash it in the bank or is it like a hold, an escrow?
We usually cash it and then treat it as an escrow account.
Councilmember Durham?
Just a question for the Vice Mayor, because you obviously researched this. Was there other appeals in those that you saw as well?
No, I, I ask the appeals that had been done and those were the two that went to completion. And one started but was withdrawn.
Okay, thank you.
So the motivation behind the increase, regardless of what the number is, is that almost every appeal is well beyond $500? Is that the point?
Unfortunately, that's correct.
And your idea is it's better to get money back, win or lose an appeal than to get a bill, especially when you lose? But even if you win?
I, I would just, I mean, I'll have to be honest, staff spent probably over $500 in staff time and resources to recover and go after the, the folks that owed us money. So, you know, that was very challenging as well.
Is there the ability to have one number for commercial appeals and one number for residential appeals?
I'd have to, I don't want to say yes or no on that.
I want Gary to say yes or no.
I, I think the, the challenge would be, a planning appeal is a planning appeal. So the fact that it is a ADU versus a use permit issue or a design, that starts getting really.
Maybe it's a no, you can't do it, but I'm just asking.
So yeah, the appeal fee can't exceed the total cost. And so as long as the higher one for commercial, I'm assuming, doesn't exceed the cost, you could have a lower one for residential appeal on the theory that the general fund is picking up the difference. So as long as there was some analysis that shows neither one exceeds the cost, but we are choosing to fund more of the residential one out of our general fund, then yes, that's a lot.
Fund it upfront, you mean? Until the payment, if somebody falls short of the appeal costs, they're still paying back regardless of what the deposit is?
Correct, on, on the assumption that not all of the fees will be recovered. And so it would be funded in that sense from.
Why would not all the fees be recovered in that appeal?
A lot of people pay.
Yeah, we.
Oh, that's what you mean by that, okay.
Yeah, we know in experience.
Yeah, 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 got it, got it. Well, okay.
But I mean, if that was something, you know, if you want. But I mean, i- if that was something, you know, if you wanted to do a residential one thousand and a commercial twenty-five hundred, again, we're trying to share with you the issue, and five hundred's just not the right number. And it's been five hundred for a number of years.
Yeah. Uh, any other questions in the staff report? Uh, member of the public have anything to say? No? Okay. Reconsideration or discussion? Um, I'm, I'm fine with two thousand. If we're looking at, and, and, and a single number, I think it gets into a little bit of uh, almost a gray area with discretion on, uh, then what happens when we have a residential business? And then is that a commercial operation? I think we're asking for maybe a little bit of trouble. I'm okay with the two thousand as recommended, and it's, the other change is just common sense. Thoughts, Counselor Durham?
I res, I understand where you're coming from, and I hear that, so please.
I'm really not okay with the two thousand. I think it's too big a jump. I, I'm really not okay with a thousand, but I do appreciate what staff is saying, that the appeals do take a lot of time, and you have to do certain things, no matter what kind it is, so I could, um, I could live with a thousand.
Any further discussion? So now we've got one supporting two thousand, one supporting a thousand. I'd like to get somewhere, not just look at each other.
Uh, I, I think that um, I'm fine with uh, two thousand. It's really, I, it, we haven't heard anything that really says we've, this has been a problem, that somebody has really come in and say, I, I really wanna appeal this, but I just don't have that kind of deposit. It means, has that been a problem?
No, the five hundred's not been the problem. The problem's been collecting the six or the eight or the thirteen thousand they owe us in total expenses.
Thousands?
Yes.
But I think the point is, is, does it become onerous if it goes from five hundred to any higher number, whether it's two thousand or one thousand?
And I would also say, one of those is an outlier, that I don't think we want to necessarily base a whole lot another. You know, I'm just letting you know that we spend quite a bit of staff time and resource, including legal time, which we don't fully get to recover on those types of things, so it's...
But you reach two thousand, the number two thousand for a reason. Do you feel like that's uh, an average, or at least uh, an often uh, achieved level of cost?
Correct. We, frankly, to bring an item, notice it, bring it back, write the staff report, present it, bring it to the council, it's not going to be much less than two thousand dollars, just in terms of the noticing requirements.
If it is, they get their money back.
And if it's less, I mean, right. And I mean, I do, I wanna be very honest that, you know, two of the cases were a little bit extreme, but that's also where it goes and how it gets involved, and how, you know, we don't have a ton of appeals. That's the other thing I will point out.
I remember when we had a resident cut down trees and felt like it was worth the fine, because the fine was so low.
That is actually true, too.
Yeah. Counselor Durham?
Thank you. I, I respect where the Vice Mayor is coming from, because I understand, I believe where you're coming from in terms of if some, if a local resident feels that they have a right to an appeal, and it's two thousand dollars, and it might be a bit onerous for them. That's my interpretation of this. So, I do respect that. At, at the same time, I hear what the rest of the council is saying, and I do feel it needs to be increased. Thank you. Or, that's me.
The volume increase?
And, sorry. And so, it does need to be increased, and if the council feels it's two thousand, then I'm fine with that.
Any other discussion? Is there a motion uh, that's requested here, is to accept uh, either the staff report is presented or any modifications to that staff report? Anybody wanna try to push a button and make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution number nineteen dash three-five-four-five, modifying the master fee schedule.
Second.
Okay, um, are, we're doing this just voice? Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
All in favor, just verbally? Uh, yes.
Yes.
Okay, so three.
Verbal.
Vice Mayor says no, and the other three are yeses, so, correct? We're all correct on that one? Okay, so that does pass. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's go on to the next item of similar theme.
Great, thank you. So, um, right now, I'm here just to present the annual administrative update of the master fee schedule. Um, and so there's no council action needed. Uh, this is just for information. Um, what we are here to present is the proposed master fee schedule for the upcoming fiscal year. And um, what we've done is we've applied the four point four percent CPI, um, and we've updated any um, any fees like the uh, utility rates per the rate schedule. And so, um, we're just showing you that we've done what you've directed us to do, which is to update the master fee schedule.
Thank you. Any questions? Counselor Mueller?
Yeah, I have a question. So, um, my sense overall is that our fees are very reasonable. I'll be the first to say, what do I pay for a business license? Twenty bucks, forty bucks? I mean, incredibly cheap. And I, I think, if I'm not mistaken, Bellagio pays the same amount, which to me is outrageous. But anyway, that they would only pay that amount. So, when you add your CPI, uh, I understand there's lots of CPIs out this and, out there, and this one's probably fairly good one, because it's related to the San Francisco Bay Area. But I also serve on budget committees for, oh, Calafco, Lafco, um, also Upper Valley Waste Management. And what we're coming to find out, even though we've got uh, CPIs like this, it's still not keeping up uh, with other things. So, do you actually go through and do an analysis about, just as we were talking about some of these other things? Does it really just cost you twenty dollars to issue a, a permit or a business license? I mean, do you just keep adding CPI, or is there a reality check?
Let me address the first one, not to, this falls into an area. The, you're referring to unfortunately what is known as the business license fee, which is actually a tax. Under California law, that is something that can only be changed or adjusted now by an act of the voters, as about...
Well, let me rephrase then to kind of save you time, just focusing, I just use that as an example. I really mean, is there a real evaluation of these fees, and how do you go about it rather than applying CPI? Are we overcharging? Are we undercharging?
We go through a exercise, um, and that's why we brought certain ones, that we said, hey, there's an issue, and we've occasionally... So, w- we start with a methodology, and the methodology is included in the formula, as is we define which CPI we're going to use. So, those were all established in the early implementation. Short answer to your question is, yes, we go through what I would say is a cursory review, and then on a more structured cycle, we will pull certain ones and do a more in-depth analysis to see if that's still accurate.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Very quick.
Yes, Counselor Durham?
And I apologize, but it's for Steve, but I appreciate. The, just real quick, the um, empty storefront ordinance? I'm sorry, I was going through this, and it came across. What's the difference between RED and Platform Eight? Just for people who ask why that's, if you could?
The ordinance has a stipulation in there with a building permit that's been pulled. So, in the case here, there's active, there's activity going on, and that's why that's not subject to it.
Any other questions? Vice Mayor?
Thank you. And just to um, confirm, Ms. Rogers, that we are not changing home occupations at this time, because we are thinking after the general plan, we'll be restructuring that ordinance and those fees.
That's correct.
Okay. Public? Still nothing. Okay. Uh, is there a motion? Uh, oh, you don't need a motion, that's right. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for the information. Just getting used to having motions. Okay, it looks like we are moving on to staff informational report. No, we just did that. Council meeting reports, comments, agenda items. Napa County City Selection Committee meeting did meet today, and as uh, the normal rotation for the South County seat on Lafco, it rotated to the former um, alternate and now regular member, uh, council member Ken Leary from American Canyon, and Vice Mayor from Napa, Scott Sedgley, goes from the um, regular member to the alternate member for the South County seat. Napa County Flood Control Water Conservation District did receive a, we, accepted a report for the Rutherford Reach Benefit Zone Assessment District, and uh, adopted a notice protest hearing. Same action was taken for the Maintenance and Watershed Management Project for the next fiscal year. And there are some repairs that are happening at the flood bypass gates, uh, because of some uh, concrete failures and some uh, changes needed for uh, sealing one of the gates. So, those are happening. Upper Valley Waste Management, I almost don't wanna ask.
I guess...
But?
But, since you have, uh, I'll start with the, the easy parts first. This um, well, the easiest is Friday is my annual organization for Shredded Day, West America Bank. It's in celebration of Earth Day, this Friday from two to four. We also have E-Waste Truck. Next Saturday, uh, is the Upper Valley Disposal Hazardous Household Waste Event. That will be um, on Saturday, April twenty-seventh, from nine to three, for residents, and the day before from one to four for businesses. And again, my favorite part is the table where they put all this stuff, and it's free. So, people bring hazardous household waste stuff, and you can actually take it back for free. So, there's a great recycling thing, so, and I like that table. All right, now for um, the Upper Valley Waste Management, since I talked to, it's good stuff, and it's expensive. Yeah, exactly. Anyway, so, uh, Upper Valley Waste Management, uh, met um, on um, Friday, and we um, at that time, uh, issued a major breach in the contract for Clover Flat landfill. We have two contracts. We have one with Upper Valley Disposal, which says thou shalt take away our garbage. We have another one that says thou shall take it to Clover Flat. So, we did uh, issue a major breach in that contract, because uh, they violated section five point seven, which says the contractor shall observe and comply with all applicable federal, state, and local laws, regulations, and code regarding the provision of solid waste handling services. So, uh, from a public health and safety perspective, we also retain the right to um, uh, extend or shorten that uh, major breach, if we would like. And then also, late last week, the um, California Regional Water Quality Control Board uh, issued their cleanup and abatement order. It was quite an extensive document of uh, thou shalt do this and thou shall do that to Clover Flat. However, they did not, um, they said that they could impose penalties, but they did not. And those penalties are quite significant, five to ten thousand dollars a day, but they still hold out that option. And then we had another update from the um, the LEA, Legal Enforcement Agency at, at the county, and considering that um, we didn't have any rains last week, they did go out and do an inspection. What is today, Tuesday? I think it was Friday. And things are improving. They um, are seeing a lot of the mitigated, mitigation mes, measures being enacted upon, so that is moving in the right direction. So, um, that's enough.
More, a little more positive than the last couple, I think.
Mayor, if I may, um, going back to Flood District, I just thought I'd remind everybody that we have the Measure A celebration on Monday, April twenty-second, which is celebrating Napa County-wide, the improvements and the project completions from the flood mitigation measure. I believe that's eleven o'clock at Oxbow Commons.
I believe you're right.
Eleven o'clock, Oxbow Bypass, yes. That did come up, is one of the announcements. Thank you for the reminder. Napa County League of Governments, uh, several of us attended, and there were presentations on the theme of arts in April. And I was able to brag about the fact that we have the largest event countywide. Thank you, Samantha, loading me up with that information. Did you wanna, Vice Mayor was also there. Anything further? It was nice, what's that? That's right, you were all there, of course. I was just particularly remembering an, an exchange that we had about a certain, especially about a certain mural that was shown as part of the demonstration of what was pre, yeah, graffiti turned to mural.
I think it's full disclosure, go ahead, keep going.
That's quite all right. People can ask for the presentation. Okay, we'll move on to quickly. Breakfast with Mr. Bunny and the Easter egg hunt coming up, I believe eight-thirty start time? Nine o'clock, Yountville Community Park. I was showing off to somebody down at the Flood Control, the Bunny Donut Wall, that uh, is quite unique, I will say. Art Sip and Stroll coming up Saturday, April twenty-seventh. And also, uh, for not only Joe Tagliabashi and myself, but others, Cycle for Sight, which is put on by the Napa Rotarians, is coming up this Saturday. They are still supporting the Enchanted Hills Camp, and also, um, since the Pathway Home has stopped um, operating, the veterans' support that they are gonna continue to provide goes out to the Martinez VA, where they have a similar uh, PTSD program for veterans there. League of California Cities update, just very quickly, I did, uh, I was on a, a one-hour webinar this morning related to some specific housing bills that we're watching very closely. SB fifty, Senator Weiner, and SB five, Senator McGuire are two that we've been paying a lot of attention to. There are also a couple of assembly bills, and these have to do with anything from uh, height restriction changes, density changes, um, parking changes, um, and just a lot of land, land use and um, housing development. So, we're closely watching all of that going forward. Was there anything further that uh, any other council members had, uh, meeting-wise? Okay. Um, also, uh, Legislative Action Day is coming up, uh, April twenty-fourth, and I will be in Sacramento for that, as well as a, a league board meeting. I know, uh, Mayor Garcia is coming from American Canyon to Ledge Action Day. That is the day where we go and uh, meet with legislators and staff and discuss many of the bills that are pending in Sacramento. So, I believe that does it for our business, except for a closed session, which we have as listed, a public employee performance evaluation of our town manager. I do not believe we anticipate any reportable action from that. So, uh, just in case people do sign off, um, I want folks to know that we will be adjourning in memory of Barbara Delinsky. As we had a moment of silence to start the meeting, uh, we will be adjourning in her memory. But for now, we will go into closed session. Thank you, everyone.